Meeting at the April 3rd, 2017, Cameron City Council in Rockville, Missouri. Do you all stand and vote with your flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, in the deep and to the skies.
Next time on the agenda, local public affairs. Darlene Breckinridge, chair. Dennis M. Clark, chair. Jeri Ann Adams, chair. John R. Figer, chair. Ronnie Jack, chair. That takes us to the minutes from March 28th, 2017, regular discussions. There are no additions or corrections.
So moved to second.
Move to second. Leading the reason, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye in favor, zero votes. Next time on the agenda, public information. Individuals addressing the council are expected to use the microphone to state their name and address when speaking. You don't have to sign a petition. But it's also a statement of interest. Put your name and address on Facebook.
Just getting rushing here. Hi, my name is Gail Roman. I reside at 1111 Fashion Drive in Kinnon. My question has to do with the landfill that was purchased. What does town people know about this landfill? Is my understanding that that particular piece of property where the utilities totally building underneath housed, and I totally understand whether they're providing out, but they need more room. My question is, have lots been surveyed off? Have you, do you know how much you can use for utilities? And have you surveyed off the rest of the utilities to see what kind of infrastructure the meeting that they're for resale? Is that an easement to be designed? Is that, you might, how much you want to be? And I don't know if that's been called having a plant county, but I know some counties, you have specific pictures of how much you have, what dollars you're paying to get the building.
Yeah, it's in Clinton County.
It's in Clinton County, okay.
The, this isn't on the agenda, so we have to keep this limited, but I'll tell you that we have not figured out what age the electric company on or done any platting of any lots.
Okay, okay. My second is about Ashland Drive, a little national drive. It's become kind of commercial. There's a lot of trucks on there, the road is rural. I was wondering if there was any community activity on servicing or fixing that. There's good trucks, Dotson has a logging company that couldn't go, he has food, parks have trucks out to the community. So I was just wondering if that was on any of the list of work areas, because it's getting pretty bad. I mean, you have drive down a little road to these. My third, third line of standing, is these co-vocations. John wrote a co-vocation with my name in tags on car. I had a similar thing happening, it expired, the car was a commute car, no one needed, just forgot about it. But I also one time had been cited, because I had changed on my dishwasher, and I have a dishwasher sitting up by my house, and somebody was trying to take a picture and send it to me and tell me I was in violation. And, but I was given a time limit in which to get that taken care of. But with the vehicle situation, I didn't have time limit to get the vehicle license. I was just given a ticket for showing up at home. And so I was just wondering, it's co-vocation, it's co-vocation, should it not be treated the same? Should you not be given 17 days direct to that situation? Then if you don't, then you pay it.
Was the car in the street or?
It was in the car.
How, how long was it expired?
Like a couple months.
Okay, I'll look into it.
I mean, it just, you know, it didn't seem like there was, I mean, it was just like, here's your ticket, because you have a vehicle that's not on car license, but I mean, it was sitting in my driveway.
Normally you don't get a ticket, you get a letter.
Well, what did I have to do? Got a letter and a ticket, running great, what'd you throw me out for?
Yeah, so sadly, all I can do, why, I was, normally you just.
Well, you know, like the dishwasher situation, I was waiting for them to know where to take it. I don't want to, didn't know where to take these licenses. It was sitting up, it wasn't like I had it sitting out like a curb or anything, it was sitting next to my house. But I was giving it only seven days. And when she rectified that situation, I took a picture and sent it back to the city. I mean, it was gone, it cannot check out, but it's gone. So I'm like, you know, if you're going to get, if you're going to find people, I mean, we should all have done the same.
Right, now that's probably the way it's ending, it's like you said. So all I can do, let's see.
Okay, the second thing was, I was never seen, Mr. from around, maybe you've never seen a ticket for my having any tax on my vehicle. And I go by social media, so, right, you know, and you might be, very much.
Anyone else have a question? Leading the reason, that takes us to your community, Cameron City Council.
Okay, before we get started, you have a new letter over that have increased the amount that things like to get from 3,000 to 5,000.
On our 10th motion to adjourn the session on the community project for North Central Service, what's the location?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved to second, discussion.
I, I would like to say something. I personally got to go to very known, this group put on a wonderful program about how to revitalize their downtown. About touring, visiting other businesses, discussing how they can utilize their space. It was very informative, and this group, this is my passion, is to get the downtown area revitalized. I think we need to do that before we do other things. So I think this is a great thing, to have support for people who want to be in honor of their ownership, but don't quite know what to do, they're there to support them. So, you know, I am 100% in favor of this.
Anyone else have to add that?
I'm just, it's a 501(c)(1), they're doing this through donations. Looks like the media is needing a little help. One thing, is, is someone here with the group?
Sure I am.
How you doing? Hey, I was just wondering, I'm all about marketing as well. I'm just wondering if we were, if we were able to provide that, if we would also get the, like on the, I said, let's see, it says join the movement, that phrase is all on the page, it breaks down.
Oh, certainly, yeah, we recognize contributors, contributors in any part of the law.
Answered my question, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question to, first, the grant of $5,000 to the North Central Service business. So moved.
So moved.
Moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye in favor, zero votes.
Thank you very much.
Next time on this, it's sitting in.
First item on this is projects and growth streak, there's nothing new to report on this item, other than we're dealing with some issues with easements. On the pedestrian bridge for the Trail Barbeau West, has completed the design work and sent its plans and specs on March 29th for review. Works our plants continuing, two-point repairs being made in some places in F-0001. Due to the recent rains, we have had bypassing of the plant in one water station, which is heavy comment, every time we have heavy rains. I didn't know if Berlin had anything to add to that, or?
Not much, Mark, just that, you know, at 4:00 this afternoon, the plant's still pushing about 6 million gallons through the day, so, got to get a lot of in, of course.
Once the ground is saturated, then we see more. With this dry, or while you'll see it raining, I mean, I have a bypass, because it's all getting absorbed into the soil at once, that can bring changes like it has, even though it's been good raining for us in other ways. It's something that's, we deal with frequently, and that's why we're doing some of the stuff that we're doing. What will probably happen in the long term, if this continues, is getting it down to acceptable levels is going to be very difficult, that's what's proven in other cities. We will probably look at a basin, if the plant, an earthy basin, which has already kind of been in our plans for the last several years, to hold that flow until it can be treated through the plant. To me, that's the most cost-effective way to go, it's very expensive, but replacing your entire system, not replace it, but the work you have to do on your entire system is very, very extensive, and you never know what you got, what you got, what you didn't get, how much is out there you didn't find, as far as illegal connections or stormwater connections into the same 3D store. So, to me, that's one, but you still go out and look at your system as well, as well, but not to that level, so, we'll continue to work on that. The animal shelter project, pretty, design is pretty much done. First week of April is when I had my report, that should be about right. Head start facility, nothing new there, projects following this plan. There are concerns at the federal level about CBPG money, but I don't know if that would affect this project since it's already been approved, so hopefully everything will stay intact there. On the development projects, we have several going on, it's been very active, a lot of interest in doing some things. So, we of course know that all will pan out, but we'll keep working with these groups and do what we can to help them. So, that's all I have to make my report.
Any other questions?
Just one real question, well actually, I've got a few questions. On the sewer project, I know in the past, we've kind of talked about, or at least it's been brought up, to reuse some of that wastewater. And I'm just wondering, I know you said it would be more expensive on this, from a sewer perspective, to have this basin, but I'm also wondering, how much more would it cost to have something like that in a facility that could potentially reuse some of that water and pump it back out into the reservoir, or in our water sheds?
Oh, you're, well, you're talking about a different type of reuse. If you, to reuse effluent like that and directly put it into water supply, I don't know if that need to be permissible, DNR would have to approve the permit for that. It would take extensive plant modifications to do that. Theoretically, it's possible, but I don't know whether they would even approve a permit for that. But, they are looking at disinfecting wastewater effluent, too, the way it's now, so, there's going to be more regulations unless things have changed recently with the, you know, the recent changes in Washington, so.
Okay, the other quick question, or suggestion, and I know we do it in most cases, but, for the beds that are being put out there for the animal shelter, I'd like to, you know, of course, make sure that we get as many camera businesses, the best opportunity to bid on that, and hopefully once those projects.
Yes, yeah, that's pretty much routine, trying to get local bidders on every project. Also too, brought up, just reminding me, I just talked to the owner of the truck stock extension, it's north of 56. And he is very interested in getting local contractors, they do that wherever possible, it's less costly for them, so they, you know, plus they're just like, good, feeling locally. And so, if anybody is interested in that, they need to let us know, because we don't know those, some of those contractors, like plumbing contractor, you know, maybe a large scale guy, or whatever they are, so. But they are interested in trying to do that, so that's good to hear, too. Thank you.
Any further questions? I have unfinished business, we have a second reading, Bill 2017-7.
Bill 2017-7, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties, Missouri, authorizing a conditional use permit for David Rock, allowing an indoor archery range and retail sales at 1117 Bryan Road.
I want to take a motion, pass Bill 2017-7 on second reading.
So moved.
Moved to second, discussion.
Paul, just give a brief rundown of the conditional use permit for.
The conditional use permit for David Rock involves indoor archery range, along with retail sales. All the plans of, or the conditional use permit have been approved by the planning committee commission, and looking for your approval here to continue forward.
You have any other questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Are you seeking to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye in favor, zero votes. We have a second and final reading on Bill 2017-8.
Bill 2017-8, an ordinance authorizing the city of Cameron accounting staff to write off uncollectible utility accounts for the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties, Missouri.
I want to take a motion, pass Bill 2017-8 on second reading.
So moved.
Moved to second, discussion.
I don't have anything, and the council sent you all regarding the research you did on the other. Thank you, sir.
We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye in favor, zero close. I want to take a motion, pass Bill 2017-8 on third reading, move to.
So moved.
Moved to second, discussion.
Darlene Breckinridge, yes. Dennis M. Clark, yes. Jeri Ann Adams, yes. John R. Figer, yes. Ronnie Jack, yes. Takes us to new business, we have a first reading. I do have a question on that one, or not that one. Unfinished business, we had like in last time about the rescission of the electric race, and it was paying, should it not have been on this agenda?
I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda or not.
No, we're going to discuss it, it was on there last, last time.
Since it's not on the agenda for sunshine all purposes, I would not discuss it tonight, but to make sure that it's on the agenda for the next council meeting, if it can be discussed, then, obviously the sunshine on the agenda has to reasonably inform people what's going to be discussed, and if they're not there, I don't think, I don't think that that could be. So, I would just continue discussion on that, so.
Takes us to new business, we have a first reading on Bill 2017-9. Bill 2017-9, an ordinance changing the reference to the International Building Code 2015 and the National Electric Code 2017 in section 3-16A, section 3-16.1, 3-16.2, 3-16.3, 3-16.4, Article 2 Buildings, section 3-81, Article 3 Plumbing Code, section 3-101, Article 4 Electrical Code, section 3-121, Article 5 Fire Prevention Code, section 3-141, Article 6 Existing Structures Code, 3-201, Article 9 Property Maintenance Code of the City Code in the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties, Missouri, and deleting the reference to prior building codes. I want to take a motion, pass Bill 2017-9 on third reading.
So moved.
Moved to second, discussion.
I'm just, I think the council staff has been looking over the codes for 2015, 2017. We reviewed the codes and would recommend that council through the foundation to be petros, get us up to date, and pull up south with our insurance records.
And there would be an 90-day period in this, we unfilled the city board before, and the city was.
That's correct, which technically, going through the process, we'd always.
It's one of our ISO requirements, too, it's not just something we agreed up, it's, being on current on the codes will impact our ISO ratings, so, you want to save current, it's possible.
Any questions?
Just one for the common, just those that are on ISO that affects all of our insurance records, so it helps keep rates lower. So we're not just throwing more regulations on you. Thank you, Eric.
We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye in favor, zero votes. Next item on the agenda, the first reading on Bill 2017-7.
Bill 2017-10, an ordinance authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Cameron, Clinton, DeKalb, and Caldwell Counties, Missouri, and the Cameron Dragonflies RC Model Club for the use of a portion of landfill that the Cameron River Road closed landfill.
I want to take a motion, pass Bill 2017-10 on third reading.
So moved. So moved.
Moved to second, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We're waiting for you, for an agreement, the Cameron Dragonflies RC Model Airplane Club, huge property that the city currently owns, is the, you know, is a closed landfill. It's on northeast really, where many model aircraft, new seeing around our city, maybe flying model aircraft is recognized as a healthy use or effective use. However, it is kind of, really is no public use area available for the flying of model aircraft. The Cameron Dragonflies RC Model does adhere to the AMA safety guidelines, and they need qualifications. It is also a permitted use, north landfill, it is a closed landfill, it has very limited use to it, with what we can and cannot do on it. The Dragonflies area, there would have a little access road, parking, and then of course, their runway area would be on the very far west end of the property, which was actually the borrow area, but they're on top of the capital landfill. We reviewed this with our insurance companies, a lot of our time, we call the qualifications. We actually had our annual inspection with DNR for the closed landfill site, so we were able to actually take the DNR solid waste division and kind of walk them through what they're doing, so the DNR is also aware and approves of this use. So, they would have followed guidelines, do, and would like to add too, that it is not just for the Dragonflies RC Model Club. They will administer the area of property, maintain it, provide the onsite supervision, whenever there's aircraft there. It is also open to any other venom or person flying aircraft, as it belongs, they follow the rules and regulations for any decent model aircraft, specifically the AMA National Model Aircraft Safety Code.
Any questions?
No, I'm not hearing that. You were just like, how was? Okay, just a couple things that kind of like, clean up. You said that you have to kind of maintain the area, right? Is, is there going to be some way that we can just verify? I don't want what's happening at Paul Field sometimes to end up happening out there as well, where we're getting more park resources, you know what I'm talking about, so.
I do, yes, and it's actually, I work for these groups that would be out in this area.
Oh, okay.
We do have to mow the landfill site, the firms, there's leachy ponds and also our fences as well up there, so those groups are out there on a regular basis.
Okay.
Probably weekly.
Okay.
Throughout the course will be summer, spring, summer, fall season, so someone will be out there and be able to see the area.
Okay, so they can, someone can let them know if it's not being properly maintained.
Correct.
Okay. There was also an area where it said, boy, I'm checking my way, there was going to be someone from the Model Club that would be supervising. How are we going to know, just on a code perspective, how will we know if they are adult? How do they know if they're actually doing laundry, I guess is my question. I mean, unless we go down there and check on them on a regular basis? Okay, but I'm just, I missed that, I'm sorry. No.
So, yes, you know, we're not going to do enforcement of that.
Okay.
With the agreement, if agreements should cover them, then they shall have somebody responsible onsite, remember the AMA, make sure the safety guidelines were followed. If some people do have it, they would be in breach of the contract agreement, no longer able to use the area.
Okay, are they going to provide us, the cities, with fly pines? The only reason I'm asking is, I can see this, as soon as people find out about it, maybe some other folks want to go down there, they want to take their drones down, whatever else, they want to fly around, but it's not associated with the club, I guess is my thought.
I see where you're going, yes, great question. I know it's on their base behind a lock gate.
Oh, okay.
I have a separate gate that the members of the Dragonflies Club will actually have a key to have access, and they will probably make, or have them make assignments as contact, that way, too, their representatives are here tonight, Kurt Ledbetter and Troy Kearns, they're kind of the organizers of the Dragonflies. So, probably have a assignment to, if you like flying, you know, please contact and press the phone number.
Okay, last question. From a renewal standpoint, is, how it's being presented, is this just, is set up and they will have it until no longer? Correct, until we decide to kick it back, or whatever, they decide to quit utilizing it, so, so forth.
Great question, there's a couple different triggers, I guess, the big one is, I believe, the 30-day notice by your department, or installation, so it would be private, almost canceled. But there's also a section in here that says that the city currently, the agreement affected immediately on notice to Dragonflies if they breach contract in any way. We, of course, again, as to those landfills, we've been, there's a section that says DNR requirements were damaged or missing. Because the cap of our landfill is very sensitive.
Right.
So where they're going is on the borrower, so if there were to be somebody driving or misuse or damage of the property, that would be a huge violation, and you could cancel the agreement effectively.
Is there a way, I'll ask you on this one, is there a way to where we could have this set up to maybe yearly renewal or something like that? I'm not, I'm not really worried about the Model Club, honestly. I'm just, you know, just don't want to have this sitting out there for the next 20 years, and they use it for four or five years, and then it's done, and people just keep calling out there.
Yeah, we could, but for that modification we made in the agreement, we'd have to hold this ordinance, because that'd be a substantial modification to the agreement, bring it back at the next council meeting. But, I mean, honestly, if within a year you do want to set it up that way, we could provide 30-day written notice, terminate the agreement, have the exact same agreement, and just put at a term that says it's, you know, renewed yearly on satisfaction of the city council that Dragonflies are following all the regulations that were there.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, appreciate it.
I have personally suggested the Cameron Dragonflies, they've been using my farm for, we talked out front, I'm not sure, five, six years. They are very neat, they're clean, they take care of things. I told them, one of the only restrictions I could own is, don't run all over the land, keep in your driveway, and they have one path back to their herd. But it's always clean, neat, they mow it, they take care of it, hell, the guys, they've always given my insurance requirements. They, they take care, they, and all they're looking for is, just like me, I told them I wouldn't run them off, but I'm not out there not building yet, they're not a permanent place. They've been doing this, I've lost their long dirt road, 25, 30 years ago, stood at or stopped out there on dirt road. They've been, group of guys have been flying for a long time, so they, like I said, I have personal experience with, they're great, and they take care of stuff.
Any other questions? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye in favor, zero votes. Next time on the agenda, the first reading on Bill 2017-7.
Mayor, I'm going to use myself as a wide.
Mayor, I'm not going to accuse myself of why I'm going to vote aye.
Our one hundredth motion has passed bill two thousand seventeen dash eleven on third reading.
So move. Second.
Move to the second discussion.
This basically is the same as the land span contract where they've, I don't know if they always did that, but they break out the, what the expected activities are going to be for the year, put that in contract, which is, I think, important, and then the anticipated budget for the year. So that kind of gives us an idea of putting the numbers in for the budget for what we need to do, so. Other than that, there's nothing unusual.
I don't know. I see. Are you real now? I think I put them up on some place.
I don't know.
Um, okay. Be nice if they did it. Any further questions?
Well, just a little higher than I asked you, I didn't mind that.
Dean Briskon, we proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're in favor, you're opposed to this conversation? Next item on the agenda is tax implement financing conditional contract.
This is just a recommendation for reappointment of Big Keith and Randy Gould, who are on the fifth mission, trying to expire soon. I believe they're going to, yeah. And I contacted them to see if they're willing to run permission. They are, so. It's my recommendation.
It's okay, we can fill in. Our one hundredth motion to appoint Big Keith, or reappoint Big Keith and Randy Gould.
So move. Second.
Move to the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye in favor, zero votes. Next item on the agenda is Cameron Police Department staffs.
Mayor, council. First of all, I can think Shelley Blais, our representative minister, Cameron Police Department puts this package together every year. And everything that goes through the Cameron Police Department goes through her desk. She keeps all these stats and everything. And at the end of the year, she puts everything together, look through, kind of see what trends we're seeing and everything. She does a great job, of course. I can't thank her enough. In the, first, we'll talk a little bit about the patrol cars. As you know, we have all patrol cars in here. We got the six cars and also SUVs. Eric is also one of our sergeants of the Cameron Police Department. He also has a background in wiring and installing vehicles. So we took him off, he agreed to do this, and then we took him off of his duties and reassigned him to do the installs for us. I talked to him a summer ago the other day. He's kind of got a price for what we're looking at now, savings and everything. We've taken him off, he still gets his salary as working for the city. He's just been reassigned to the event. And at least sixteen thousand dollars we saved in our budget, just like him doing installs. He does a phenomenal job, just not saving a job. Also Stan Hendricks, I did not put him in here, but he also has, a lot of them know Stan, he's very good at radios and program. So years ago, we bought equipment, we programmed on radios, and he could install stuff like that and I say it was a bottom, you know, so. We got the new radios in, police patrol cars, and then we have where we can talk on our radio channels. We've all, all been in. These radios tend to do two things, and they're also talking the most, and so each of the new cars, we got two updated radio system. I'm still waiting. We have one more account managed to do the repeater system inside the ceiling where our handhelds will work better. And we talked to Wal, which is a working management. As you see on some of the pages, it will show a chart of the Cameron Police Department, a flow chart. And then we go into the two thousand sixteen sta- stats at our plants. Everything stayed pretty well in line except for our drug arrests and incidents, with a large increase on that. Looking back on that, we had a lot of young officers and really refocused on drugs and puberty, kind of showing the big off car stops and everything. Put our numbers up there, making a lot of arrests. From a few pages back there, you'll see, we're kind of breaking down between marijuana and misdemeanor charges for, which would be methamphetamine. Drug like that. You kind of see where we're seeing a lot, it's almost fifty-fifty of marijuana, also methamphetamine, or felony drugs. Everything else stayed in line, just with small level down increases. The next page shows us down where we have kind of a ten year increase that I kind of look at interesting and kind of see what, what we've seen the past nine or ten years looking at. With our federal arrest and. We also had an increase in our motor vehicle accidents. When we look back, last year we had two large projects going on, I thirty-five, we would read that, you know, the thirty-six bridge. We also had a sidecar project where they kind of overlap each other. So there's a lot of accidents that we have on Wallminster, if you can look at that. And that kind of helped out a little bit on the increase in the accidents and everything, which is going to happen. I mean, it's just, with large proj- projects and that, right, with a large amount of traffic. Some of the pages here will show a map of Cameron. The red dots are non-injured accidents and the red dots are injured accidents. And kind of lets us see where some of our spots are across Cameron. We see what we're seeing in most accidents. More maps of certain areas and certain intersections, kind of showing that. A racial profiling page, twenty-eight. Every time a Cameron police officer stops at a bar, they have to fill out a racial profiling and ask several questions on it. So that goes down, and if you look through there, you'll see how many citations were written, different stats on everything, on what the car stops were. How many warnings were also given. As we move on, we have school resource officers, we have his stats, and then we go into the emergency, the new page, we put in with our Cameron emergency response teams, which kind of gets our SWAT team. We also have a K nine. His numbers came back up last year, or two thousand fifteen, he was injured, was out most of the year. So his numbers are back up with a K nine, which our K nine is getting up in age. He's nine years old, getting to ten, so that's a little portion of the year. A little more on, if that is something you need, go forward, but we're also going to have a look at that. As we go on through, we have Detective Division, which they both do an outstanding job, Ivy and Aaron. As the reports are taken, the larger cases will go to them, and they can also look at everything and follow up on those larger cases. When it comes to the new questions, are there any more to ask for? I'm talking about now, I thought.
The only thing that really, really bothers me, right, because of the growth in this town. I mean, do we have anything in place to try to address that? I know that the schools are having an issue. I just, it really bothers me that that's increased so much.
Unfortunately, we're seeing a trend. I talked to the D-Day friends, it's a, it's everywhere. We're working with the school, we have these superintendents, they're doing the drug testing policies, which we just had a board where people could come and talk with several school, with the school district, or do know officers, the police department. Our K nine, they're doing drug testing out with any, with the students in the school. That's random, so we're also partnering up with our K nine, and it's also random for anyone to walk there. So kids will never know if a dog's coming that day, check loggers, and we're going to work all throughout the school. So that's one new partner up at the school, trying to make sure we're doing everything we can there. Last year, a person I worked with on Major Case Law has charged a county county drug traffickers. And I went to him, and one of my goals was to get a full-time drug investigator, someone that not just working on, on car stops, or seeing, or getting someone driving through town when they have drugs on. But I was looking for someone that could do investigations, who would work higher up, can read this, and help to look after that. I'm looking into that. We're trying to get a grant thing to fund that. At least I worked with Mark on it, at least seventy-five percent of the salary, when we did that, and as much as we could get out of it. Unfortunately, the state was cutting back, and instead of those bar doors, they're all sort of hanging in with the government in now. Increase more money, so that's something else I'll be working on again. We won't have to get someone that can just work, concentrate, put all the people together, and even put in that, trying to stop it. But unfortunately, talking to the DA, Kansas City, and everything, it's just, it's, hopefully that's why. And we're seeing it throughout all of our college workers, mental health, whether it's people that have been using for a long time, they have the health there. The long-term effects of the bar doors, because we're, we're seeing them on all aspects. Not good news.
Well, I, I too looked at that, and I saw the drug numbers, and it's disappointing to me, of course, because I've got three boys growing up through school and stuff. We've got kids in school. We don't have kids out there, we have kids in there at some point. I look at the, if, if we can't get a grant, we need to, we need to dig down in our budget and find someone to look at getting this kind of office. Because I, I look at it as an EDOC type of thing. If we have better, well, if we have less drugs than going down the street or going over here, kind of families are looking for that. So I almost look at that as something that is important enough, that you don't even have to pay for it. So I think that's something we should do as a council to, to try to dig in and find. And I also know that Max is, I mean, he's an integral part of that. So we're going to have to come up with the funding for that too. So at some point, we've got to sit down, give the revenue order, to give you what you need, to make us safe, and to help bring in this, you know, the right folks that we want to come into town. So, but I, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate you doing this. Appreciate the entire department effort. And if you would, please let Officer Belsey know too. Wow. Thank you for saving the city. That much fun. That's incredible. So.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the second public transportation, individual jurisdiction class, or as a section, microcar, for the state of the nation. We have a five minutes hour. Takes us to the last public transportation. I'm learning.
Um, so again, just thank Officer Belsey for doing that, and, um, oh, I was just going to ask, are we, are we still using the advisory council to the mayor? Have we? I just haven't seen anything.
I haven't received any of this, which is best on the books.
Okay, so there is supposed to be contact?
Yes.
Got you. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good. And don't forget to go vote tomorrow.
Chief? Jake? You're on?
Thank you.
And I, takes us to executive session, litigation. All our candidates to enter executive session on final call. So move.
Second.
Move to the second.
Dennis M. Clark?
Yes.
Jerianne Edens?
Yes.
John R. Figer?
Yes.
Ronnie Jack?
Yes.
Darlene Breckinridge?
Yes.